Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for that. So chipper of you. The hour for convening has arrived and the Senate will now come to order. At this time, I'd like to ask that all unauthorized persons exit our chamber. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader. For a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand in recess until 3:30.
Before I take up that motion, I want to thank you for your service on such an important day. I also want to thank the members in this chamber, which I'm going to take the time to read, that have served in our military. Senators from the 43rd, Senator from the 43rd, the 28th, the 30th, the 15th, the 10th, the 54th, the 33rd, the 14th, and the 23rd. Thank you so much for your service to this country. You know, on a day that is so important to so many, it's important for so many different reasons. Some people, it's a period of time in their life where they felt the closest to their nation. They learned so much about themselves. And some families recognize a day like today because they've lost a loved one. So I didn't want to go any further than this to thank everybody for their service. The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand in recess subject to the call of the Chair, which is 3:30, estimated to be 3:30. Is there objection? The Chair hears none and the Senate stands in recess.
I was a little bit uneasy thinking you forgot me. But a great time in history for Georgia Tech. Today, yeah, today in 1908, Bobby Dodd was born after he graduated from the University of...[717.01][717.01](laughter) And Dodd took a job as assistant coach for Georgia Tech. Later, he became one of three players and coaches that was put in the college football Hall of Fame because he was a player and a coach. And of course, we know now that he was, remains a rambling wreck for 57 years to his death in 1988. Mr. President, after that great news, and today being Veterans Day, and we appreciate all of our veterans, the Journal's been read and found to be correct.
Is the rumor true that you're a huge Georgia Tech fan?[757.29][757.29](laughter) Well played. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? The chair here is none. The reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The chair here is none, and the Journal is confirmed. All senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the secretary's desk at this time. Mr. Secretary, first reading of Senate bills and resolutions, please. That was quick. First reading of House bills and resolutions is what I meant to say.
House Bill 3E-X by Representative Watson of the 172nd and others. A bill to be entitled an act to provide for a new charter for the city of Coolidge, to provide for pending matters, to provide for definitions in construction...
State and local government.
House Bill 6EH by Representative Lumsden of the 12th. A bill to be entitled an act to create a Chautauqua County Public Facilities Authority to provide for...
State and local government.
That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read reports of standing committees?
Mr. President, the Senate Committee on State and Local Government has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. Senate Bill 6EX, do pass, Representative, Senator Anderson of the 24th District Chair. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on State and Local Government Operations has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. Senate Bill 5EX, do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Anderson of the 24th District Chair. Mr. President, the Senate Committee on Reapportionment and Redistricting has had under consideration the following legislation, and has instructed me to report the same back to the Senate with the following recommendation. House Bill 1EX, do pass, respectfully submitted, Senator Kennedy of the 18th District Chair. That completes the order.
Mr. Secretary, will you please read bills and resolutions for the second time?
Senate Bill 5EX by Senator Dixon of the 45th and others. Gwinnett County Board of Education, education district boundaries revised. Senate Bill 6EX by Senator Dixon of the 45th and others. Gwinnett County Board of Commissioners reconstitute. House Bill 1EX by Representative Rich of the 97th. Georgia House of Representatives Redistricting Act of 2021, enact. That completes the order.
All right, now it's time for our morning roll call. Are there any, or afternoon roll call, sorry. Is there any motions to excuse? The chair recognizes the senator from the 33rd.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the senators from the 35th and the 38th.
Without objection, the senators from the 35th and 38th are excused. The chair recognizes the senator from the 51st.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to ask for unanimous consent to excuse the senator from the 20th and the 19th.
Without objection, the senators from the 20th and the 19th are excused. The chair recognizes the senator from the 41st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consent to excuse the senators from the 6th and the 48th.
Without objection, the senators from the 6th and the 48th are excused. Are there any additional motions to excuse? The chair sees none. The secretary will call the role of senators. Signify your presence by voting the a switch. The secretary will unlock the machine.[960.02][960.02](bell)[961.02][961.02](audience clapping)[962.02][962.02](audience clapping)[963.02][963.02](audience clapping)[964.02][964.02](audience clapping)[965.02][965.02](audience clapping)[966.02][966.02](audience clapping)[967.02][967.02](audience clapping)[968.02][968.02](audience clapping)[969.02][969.02](audience clapping)[970.02][970.02](audience clapping)[971.02][971.02](audience clapping)[972.02][972.02](audience clapping)[973.02][973.02](audience clapping)[974.02][974.02](audience clapping)[975.02][975.02](audience clapping)[976.02][976.02](audience clapping)[977.02][977.02](audience clapping)[978.02][978.02](audience clapping)[979.02][979.02](audience clapping)[980.02][980.02](audience clapping)[981.02][981.02](audience clapping)[982.02][982.02](audience clapping)[983.02][983.02](audience clapping)[984.02][984.02](audience clapping)[985.02][985.02](audience clapping)[986.02][986.02](audience clapping)[987.02][987.02](audience clapping)[988.02][988.02](audience clapping)[989.02][989.02](audience clapping)[990.02][990.02](audience clapping)[991.02][991.02](audience clapping)[992.02][992.02](audience clapping)[993.02][993.02](audience clapping)[994.02][994.02](audience clapping)[995.02][995.02](audience clapping)[996.02][996.02](audience clapping)[997.02][997.02](audience clapping)[998.02][998.02](audience clapping)[999.02][999.02](audience clapping)[1000.02][1000.02](audience clapping)[1001.02][1001.02](audience clapping)[1002.02][1002.02](audience clapping)[1003.02][1003.02](audience clapping)[1004.02][1004.02](audience clapping)[1005.02][1005.02](audience clapping)[1006.02][1006.02](audience clapping)[1007.02][1007.02](audience clapping)[1008.02][1008.02](audience clapping)[1009.02][1009.02](audience clapping)[1010.02][1010.02](audience clapping)[1011.02][1011.02](audience clapping)[1012.02][1012.02](audience clapping)[1013.02][1013.02](audience clapping)[1014.02][1014.02](audience clapping)[1015.02][1015.02](audience clapping)[1016.02][1016.02](audience clapping)[1017.02][1017.02](audience clapping)[1018.02][1018.02](audience clapping)[1019.02][1019.02](audience clapping)[1020.02][1020.02](audience clapping)[1021.02][1021.02](audience clapping)[1022.02][1022.02](audience clapping) All right, it's now time for our afternoon devotional, and I ask that all senators take your seats, cease all audible conversations, and doorkeepers, please secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to recognize the senator from the 4th to lead us in our pledge and to introduce our extremely patient chaplain of the day.
Let us pledge the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, for it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, living and just. Now Georgia flag. I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles of its standing, of its justice, tolerance, and courage. That courage is getting louder. First of all, Happy Veterans Day, and those veterans, thank you for your, thank y'all for your service, and thank you for giving us a land of the free and home of the brave. God bless each of y'all.[1084.83][1084.83](applause) It's my great pleasure today to introduce a friend of mine by the name of David Lee Davis. David was actually here during our earlier session this year, and he's back for a return performance today. David began his career as a United Methodist pastor, serving congregations in Decatur and Lawrenceville, and in 1995, he founded Hamilton Mill Methodist Church, and that congregation grew to about 2,700 people. David received his BA in Biblical Studies from Houghton Wesley College, a Master of Divinity from Emory University, and a Doctor of Ministry from Princeton. While at Princeton, he studied and wrote about leadership development as a faith-based context. Pretty cool. David currently serves as Director of Advancement for Hagia International in the Southeast Area, Southeast United States, and that's how I got to know David. Joanne, my wife, and I are supporters of Hagia International, which is a ministry that brings people from foreign countries over here and teaches them how to be missionaries back in their countries. Hagia International has been identifying, equipping, and supporting high-level difference-makers in emerging nations, teaching how to leverage their position to demonstrate and present the gospel and create sustainable transformation. They have equipped over 127,000 leaders since 1971, and have 504 alumni associations, and has over 117 nations around the world. In his spare time, didn't realize this, he is an avid oil painter, a cyclist, and loves to speak and touch in congregations throughout the Southeast. David resides in Brazelston, Georgia, with his wife Jennifer, and he attends Andy Stanley's church in North Point. Let us welcome David Davis.
Thank you so much, Senator Hickman. Lieutenant Governor, thank you so much for this opportunity, and esteemed members of this auspicious house. Only in a house like this can someone say they are a Georgia fan but likes Georgia Tech.[1217.21][1217.21](laughter) As you know, World War I was known as the Great War, and officially that war ended with the signing of the Treaty of Versailles on June 28, 1919. But the fighting ended much earlier, on the 11th day of the 11th month, the 11th hour in 1918. President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11th as the first commemoration of Armistice Day with these words. These are important words. "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service, and with gratitude for victory, both because of the thing to which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the counsel of the nations." Today, we recognize and we honor those who've served this nation, and they came to love this nation, and in some cases gave their lives in doing so. Jesus, who I have come to love, for the difference knowing Him has made in my life, once said these words, "Greater love hath no man than this; then that man lay down his life for his friends." When we were children, we learned that the difference, there was a difference between right and wrong, and some of us learned those lessons the hard way. We maybe saw a belt, or a switch, or we're grounded. Others of us were blessed with parents who encouraged and taught, and most of all, lived out what they believed, and so we had to follow. And that is the morality of our childhood, learning and doing what is right, learning what is wrong, and then choosing to do what is right or facing the consequences of doing wrong. Friends, that is childlike morality. If you're a follower of Jesus, then you have come to know that much more is demanded of us. The decision is not so much between what is right and wrong. Doing what is right is not the penultimate moment of our moral life, and the man who gave me this pin taught me that. Doing what is right is the baseline. It is the standard. It is the beginning of our moral life. This is the remarkable struggle that Jesus often had with the people of His day, people who only thought about doing what is right, being what is right, standing for what is right, or what their version of right looked like, what was right for them, not always what was right for the people who looked like them, or thought differently than them. The choice before us today, as mature people of faith, people who have committed ourselves to the service of others, in the memory of those who have given their lives to this nation, is not between what is right and wrong, but it is between what is right and What is lawful, what is expected from the one who died for us, and the ones who gave their lives for this nation, is that they have a, they have a right to demand more from us, to demand what is good, what is honorable, what is loving, what is just, what is merciful. I promised that I would tell this story today of the man who gave me this pin. I wasn't going to do it, but I made him a promise. His name was Major Colonel Sturm. He enlisted in the Army in 1942, was commissioned in 1944. I had the joy of serving as his pastor and officiating at his funeral service in Fort Benning. As a young man, he was, became the commander of a rifle company, 3rd Battalion, 253rd Infantry, 63rd Infantry Division. He commanded units during the Battle of the Bulge and broke the line at, I hope I pronounce this right, the Siegfried Line. After World War II, he returned to college and was called back into service during the Korean Conflict. There, he served in the 23rd Infantry Regiment, the 2nd Infantry Division, and made the initial assault on Heartbreak Ridge. After a few days on that particular battle, he turned the assignment of Heartbreak Ridge over, and he went on to do rescue missions, and then later on, he was recalled back up in the Vietnam War conflict. He was a great American. But that's not the end of his story. After his active duty, he retired in Southern Florida where he began a program to pair young men who were living in under-resourced communities with older adult mentors who could teach them how to play tennis. He's responsible for beginning over 60 tennis programs in under-resourced school in Florida, and at the time of his death, over 250,000 young people had participated in this mentoring tennis program that he had started, and untold thousands received scholarships for tennis. He's the one that taught me that the Ten Commandments and the basic expectation of what is right is just the beginning of our moral life, that we are called to do more than just what's right, but to do that which is good, and to do that which is good for all. And to that end, I say thank you for your service, and encourage you to continue to do the good work that those who died for this country have called you to. Let us pray. God of all peoples, we do thank you for the roles to which you've assigned us, and as we come into this day and this season of legislation, we pray that you would enable us, empower us, and gift us with wisdom that we might seek the greatest good for the greatest number of people. Help us to be thankful in our hearts every day for the men and the women who gave their lives that we might serve this beautiful country and its vision. And we pray, and I pray especially, Heavenly Father, for the families of those men and women who are represented here today, that you would bless them, bless their families, and bless all that they love for the service that they render to this nation and to your kingdom. And to that end, we pray and give you thanks. Amen. Amen.
Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The chair sees none. Does any senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? The chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we heard during the devotional, World War I, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, that's when they signed an armistice. It's kind of like recess that we took here a little while ago because the treaty wasn't signed for a few months later, but that's recognized as the end of the majority of the fighting there. In 1954, the U.S. renamed Armistice Day to Veterans Day to more fully recognize all those who've served our nation. Within this chamber, we have 11 members that have honorably served our nation. If you're here, and there's a, we've got a thin crowd here this afternoon for some reason, but would you stand? The senator from the 2nd, the senator from the 10th, the senator from the 15th, the senator from the 28th, the senator from the 33rd, the senator from the 43rd, the senator from the 54th, the senator from the 23rd, the senator from the 14th, and even now, the senator from the 32nd? If y'all would stand, and look at these people right here, you notice they represent an image that is America. No one sex, one party, one race has a lock on patriotism. And I just wanted y'all to stand to tell you how much I was, I'm proud of your service to our nation and your service to the state. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the rules, Chairman, for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been down here so much this past week, I feel like Josh McCune. So, I just want to, I want to talk about veterans too. And thank you first for your service and thank you, Majority Leader, for pointing everybody out. That was perfect. My hero was my dad, Henry Eugene Mullis. He was a Staff Sergeant in the Army. He was in World War II in the Battle of the Bulge, landed at Normandy, D-Day, but plus three, where I probably wouldn't be here. For those of you may like that part, just move it on. And he was in Korea. They told my dad after he, after World War II was over, he said, "Gene, if you enlist, we'll send you to Fort Hood and let you train troops." So, he enlisted and a week later, he was on a plane to Korea. So, and in Korea, he had frozen feet, so they sent him to London, actually, for his treatment after he got him stable. And then after that, I think he was dismissed. But my dad was a man of a sense of duty, kind of like we are. We're here because we feel it as a sense of duty as well as our responsibility and taking care of people. And whatever your patriotism is, I'm grateful to know each and every one of you and for that that you give to the people of Georgia through your district and other places. So, I want to today thank my dad, my hero, and all the other wonderful military people that have paid the price of freedom, of the blanket of liberty and justice that we have. So, thank you very much, veterans. Mr. President, I yield the well.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes the senator from the 28th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my first time in the well down here this session, so first off, I just want to say you're all welcome. But no, today on Veterans Day, I thought it'd be a great day to honor the life and legacy of my next-door neighbor, John Caldwell. And we called him Big John because Big John had Little John. Little John lives right behind Big John. Well, Little John's only about six foot four and Marine and just a good man that my kids love and adore and go visit with, you know, pretty much every day they want to go there. So, but Big John, he actually passed away last week, November 4th. And I just want to, I'm doing a resolution for him and I'm going around getting all the veterans, I want y'all to sign this, because Big John was a veteran and a very strong advocate for veterans locally. And he was just a great man. So, certainly, we all mourn the loss of him. But he was born on February 22nd, 1934, in Noonan, Georgia. He served as a guardian of our nation's freedom and liberty with the United States Army Reserve as a real-life rocket scientist. He worked on the Apollo program Saturn V subcontract with NASA at Redstone Arsenal in Huntsville, Alabama. And after that, he returned to Noonan, the great city of homes, where he worked at the Bonnell Company, joined the Quanis Club, and became a deacon and eventual elder in the Noonan Church of Christ. In 1976, Mr. John became the official freelance photographer of Powers Crossroads Country Fair and Arts Festival, which was a longtime festival in Noonan. And a lot of his photography is still on display at the McCourty Hollis Museum. He was a deep man of abiding faith. He was an active and founding member of the Downtown Church of Christ in Noonan. He was united in love and marriage to Ann Caldwell. Miss Ann passed away shortly after we moved in back in 2012. And I hope that wasn't my fault, but you never know. But after, after Miss Ann passed away, a few years later, Mr. John went, he married Miss Sybil Harris. And when he, after he got married, he came to me and he said, "Well, man, I'm moving, I'm moving further south." And it turned out, he moved one street south and with Miss Sybil. And so, he did keep his house there on Parks Avenue, but he moved all the way over to Elm Street. So, but while he was married with Miss Ann, he had two great children, one of I've mentioned, Little John, and then Mary, who, Mary lives down the street as well. And they had, they had five grandchildren between the two of them, Aaron, Joseph, Lauren, Emily, and Ann. And so, just in honor of them, I just asked, in honor of Big John and just his love for this country and his love for the state, I ask that we hold a moment of silence.
Please rise and offer a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 5th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, my colleagues, to listen to me. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the veterans, not only Georgia, not only my chambers over here and all around the world. American veterans are all around the world. I salute you, I thank you, because this is a great country. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't immigrate here. I just want you to mention something that, just to refresh, you know, I come from Gwinnett County as an immigrant, as a citizen of, residence of Gwinnett County, citizen of State of Georgia and American citizen. One-third of my people that lives in Gwinnett County, they weren't even born in this country. One-third of my district weren't born in the state of Georgia. And one-third of the people who were born in Georgia lives in Gwinnett County. And some of you might not know that I moved to Gwinnett County in late 80s. So, I have three decades in Gwinnett County. So, I know Gwinnett County a little bit more than probably most of you people. I don't want, you know, I don't know how long you've been, some of you in Gwinnett County, but I've been there almost four decades, I mean, more than three decades over there. So, I just want to mention something, we had two bills came out yesterday, this is going to probably come in, I just want to warn you, cautions you. You know, you are trying to rush something, violating the Gwinnett Legislation delegation. I'm the chairman of Senate delegation of Gwinnett County. And you are trying to do something to circumvent the political system, the rules that we have in the Senate. If you do that, eventually, you might gain, you have the vote, you can pass it at the committee hearing. One more thing, we had a committee hearing yesterday about the school board, today with the hearing, the commissioner, about the commission. I did not see one single folks from Gwinnett County came in and for the legislation. But I have seen many, many folks, the room was full, spoke against it. I just want you to think about it. I just want you to think about it. Short run, you can win. Long term, you're going to lose in Gwinnett. Gwinnett has changed for the better. Gwinnett was great when I was there, it was less than 400,000 population. We didn't, we didn't need it more commissioner, more school board. We didn't need it even last year. We didn't need it in January session, and suddenly, it's emergency, we need it now, trying to bypass the local legislation, saying it's a, you know, it's a general legislation. Whatever you do, I'm cautioning you, this is not going to help you in the long run, my friend. We are all friends over here. I may be a legislator, I consider you all friends, but if this bill comes in, you pass it, I did not see 164, I mean, 159 county, I didn't see any other county trying to split, trying to go in other county. I'm not trying to do, pass a bill or, you know, try to do something with the local legislation in Savannah or Chatham or Augusta, Columbus, whatever it is. Leave the Gwinnett to us, the people who represent Gwinnett County. When we had people, you know, people, white people, let me make it straight, the white people, when they, they served in the Gwinnett County Commission, county was great. Minority got elected, county is great. Nothing changed. I don't see any urgency. I did not see any one piece of urgency, and nobody came and told me that they need to do, they are having troubling for the school or the county service. Yeah, if we need more commissioner, more school board, let's talk about it. Let's come to the proper procedure. We are better than that. We have a lot of political discourse all around the country, Washington. Don't bring the Washington to Georgia. Leave Georgia as is. We are better than this. We are better than this. And show some decency to your colleagues, to your friends. When I had my Community Affairs Appreciation Day, I invited my colleagues from the other side, Senator Dixon, to come and join me. I didn't, wasn't thinking, as a Republican senator, I invited, I reached out to Lieutenant Gorman's office for him to come show up. Because that's who we are. In Gwinnett County, we are better off because of the diversity, because who we are. So, don't try to divide Gwinnett County. Leave Gwinnett County alone. Nobody owns Gwinnett County. You're not going to be in this city forever. Think about it. You do something that you're going to, rest of the life, on your vote, we're going to amplify. People can know that you came after us and we're going to, somebody's going to come after you too. I'm not going to be there for my, rest of my life. I'm not here, I'm here to represent the people that I represent, come from 100 different countries, speak 100 different languages, and nobody want this. If you want this, let's sit down at the table and do it proper way. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes the senator from the 54th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Friends, I rise today as we celebrate Veterans Day.
Friends, I rise today as we celebrate Veterans Day. Because these are those among us who know full well the difference between the want and their hope. For only hope compels us beyond our own self-serving interest and to serve a greater purpose than we could ever imagine for ourselves. As a young man serving in the military, I had a good friend give me a quote that I would like to share with you today. Many of you probably heard this before, but I think it speaks volumes, and it's timeless and it's needed for application. And this is President Theodore Roosevelt. It's not the critic, it's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errors and comes short time and time again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at least, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so this place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know that neither victory nor defeat. For those of you who've served, from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. And for the sake of those who are still serving across our state, I just say thank you again. Because we would not be a free nation if it weren't for the courageous among us who sacrifice, and just to sign your name, you've sacrificed, you've made a deal that says, "I will give my life for the needs of others." And that is, there's only one other soul, I know that lived on this earth, that did that for us all. And so, that's why we celebrate Veterans Day, and it's my honor to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Chair recognizes the Senator from the 36th for a point of personal privilege.
I certainly join with others of you who have made such moving remarks on the occasion of Veterans Day, and shared with us important moments out of history and individuals whose lives made a difference. I'm coming to the well to take a few minutes in response to some words that you heard yesterday from the Senator from the 56th about the Fulton County and City of Atlanta jail Facilities that my taxpayer, my taxes helped pay for, and all of those in Fulton and Atlanta helped pay for. And the good news, while what you heard yesterday was a message that castigated Atlanta for having closed our city jail and remonstrating with all these bad policy decisions and how we ought to do this, that, and the other with our facility. Apparently, the Senator was sadly not quite up to date, and I wanted to tell you some good news that is going in the right direction with that facility here in our great city of Atlanta. And that is that the memorandum of agreement has been signed between Fulton County, the City of Atlanta, Grady Memorial Hospital, and the Policing Alternatives and Diversion Initiative. And a portion of this facility is being created as a center for diversion and services, and gives the police, who every day are encountering people with mental illness, substance abuse issues, in need of all sorts of support to turn their lives around. And a jail bed's not the place that that's going to happen. This diversion center is going to provide services, behavioral health screenings, medical care, sobering rooms, case management, a place to get in off the street and get engaged with services, wraparound services. The policing authorities welcome this because they have such few alternatives when a person with mental illness or substance abuse issues is crossing the lines and posing, you know, a problem in public, for the public. So, this is going to be used by, utilized by both the Fulton authorities, by the policing authorities here in the city, and it's a two-year agreement. The Policing Alternatives Diversion goes out into the streets and identifies people that need help, need support, and speak to them in a way, not with a gun and a badge, but with, from a social work approach, to encourage them to accept some services. And this, and our jail, is being repurposed in part to do that. So, I lift, I lift that up as a great model, that's going to be a plus for those who are out on the front lines policing, as well as the families and the individuals that are in need of services that are not best served by a jail cell, but rather by engaging with that individual to meet some high needs that they have in terms of behavioral health and substance abuse. So, I just wanted to go on the record and say that we are in Atlanta and in Fulton County acting responsibly, collaborating, not attacking one another, looking for solutions, and moving in the right direction. That's one of those win-wins. And I'm happy to share more about the program. I'm very familiar with the Policing Alternatives Diversion. They've had successes, and we're going to see this as a success that Atlanta and Fulton can be proud of, as well as the really life-saving measures that are going to be offered there to people in need. Just to correct the record of the picture you got yesterday from the Senator from the 56th about our jail situation in Atlanta and Fulton County. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 18th for a point of personal privilege.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Just want to share a couple of thoughts with you. First of all, to those in this chamber, regardless of where you sit or what part of your line with, I think we all consider each other friends, and so I want to offer a hearty thanks and a sincere appreciation for those of you that have served in the military. I really appreciate that. And I think we don't thank our service members enough and our veterans enough. And also, I want to thank everybody across the country, and certainly Georgians that are serving. But it struck me a few minutes ago, a little earlier, that this is the only time that I've been, and good Lord willing, maybe only time will be in session on Veterans Day. Ten years from now, perhaps again, but I don't know that I'll be here ten years from now. And there's two people that I always call on Veterans Day, and I just wanted to share this with you. One is my dear best friend, Tripp Self in Macon. Tripp went to the Citadel, then he joined the Army, went to Korea, and he has continued public service as a judge, where he continues to serve now. I always call him. And so, I thank him for his service and the example that he sets. The other one is my stepfather. His name is Jim Branton. My father passed away when I was 19, and several years later, my mother married Jim. And Jim grew up in a family that a lot of folks served in his milit, in the military. He left before he was, I think he was old enough actually to join. Joined the Army, did over 20-plus years, had two other careers after that. But for me to think of Jim, he is the exhibit A for me of duty, and a man who understands duty. And I've seen that in two ways that I'll share with you. The first, you have to kind of pull it out of him, that he'll talk about his service in Vietnam. And I think one of his jobs, his job was, I don't think there's an actual, it's not called being a sniper, there's some other different word for it, some military word. But he's got some pretty incredible stories of the things he did, the things he was asked to do for his country, and some pretty harrowing experiences. He also literally lived all over the world, and had, has got some great stories. Jim loves to hunt, loves to fish, but he loves this country, and still loves it, and would do anything for it. I saw Jim Branton's version of duty in a very personal way. My mother passed away January 11th of this year, which was the day one for us in session. She had suffered from some illness for a few months, and we knew she was in hospice, and we knew the time was close, didn't know it was going to be the first day of session for us. But I saw my stepdad exhibit duty to my mom in a way that is so incredibly inspiring, as my mother was very feeble, and he took care of her, and even shielded me and my two brothers from things that he would tell me later, "I just didn't want you two boys, you three boys, to have to see that, or have to go through that." And he shouldered it himself, because that's Jim Branton. So, I've seen duty up close. I love him, my brothers and I love him, and we will take care of him as long as he's on this earth. But to think of a word that it said a lot, but to see someone who lives it, and that is duty, is really inspiring. Thank you for letting me share something personal with you. And with that, Mr. President, I yield the will.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 34th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. I rise to thank my colleagues who have served. I also wanted to give recognition to my grandfather, who I first knew as a soldier, served in World War II, Claude Edgar Johnson, and his son, my uncle, Winfrey Johnson, served in the Navy. And to my boo, my 45 years, he had just gotten out of the Air Force and decided to come to Georgia as opposed to Alabama, which he was born and raised, right? He picked a real peach, a good Georgia peach, and 45 years later, we're still standing, but I am so proud to have married a veteran. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll yield the will.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 47th for a point of personal privilege.
Y'all know how much I don't like to come to the well. So, for me to come to the well, it means something. I want to tell you about four special people in my life that are veterans. And I found that out from our esteemed Colonel from the 30th District, about the fourth one. But the first one was my father. He was a World War II veteran, served honorably in the Navy. Said, you know, if you listen to all the stories, he was there when they bombed Pearl Harbor, he was there when they pushed the bomb out of the plane, at Hiroshima and everything else in between. But I think he was stuck on the beaches of the Great Lakes during the war, and luckily, he saw no combat. The next one I want to tell you about is my wife's father. He's a career Marine. Said, he served several tours in Vietnam, a lot of hand-to-hand combat, a lot of things that you don't want to talk about. Said, it's one of those things that veterans have to do, things that are not really human. And that's where, for me, they go above and beyond the duty to serve our country and our freedoms that we get to enjoy. My next-door neighbor, he's 91, celebrated his 91, 91st birthday last month, he was in Korea. Said, he talks about all the things that went on in Korea, and a lot of them that just, like I said, serving in military combat is not one of those things that anybody wants to do. But the last and the final person I want to tell you about, that the Colonel told me was a veteran, that's the one that excites me the most, said, is my daughter. Said, Rob and I are more than excited that our daughter has joined the United States Air Force. She got commissioned last May. She will start flying with the Air Force next April. And one of the things that I pray and hope that all of our veterans that serve today and serve in the future can serve without going to war. Said, a strong military is a great deterrent to going to war. And we're lucky in this country that we have the most powerful military on the planet. I hope that we can keep that. But we all owe that debt of gratitude to those veterans that have served, those veterans that are yet to serve, and those that protect us just by being there. And I'm excited to share that news about my daughter. I hope that there are no more wars. Said, the Great War was, World War I, what we call it, but you know, all of them are senseless, and I hope that with the leadership of our country, we can prevent that from happening in the future. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield the will.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 13th for a point of personal privilege.
Friends, colleagues, I rise today to tell you about a man. A man I knew that was 17-years-old, who lied about his age to get into the Army. World War II was among us. This man went in because he wanted to fight for what he believed in, freedom. He wanted to believe that he wanted to make a difference for his family. He went in and served through five of the most horrendous battles you could ever imagine. He got five battle stars for serving in these battles. This was the most gentle man I've ever met in my life. Yet he served through all these and saw these atrocities and all this horror that war brings. This man came back to his community, raised a family, became just a regular guy working a regular job, and participated up until the day he passed away, in anything and everything. This man had a motto among his other colleagues that served in the 630th Tank Destroyer Battalion. They saw the most action, because they were always out front. And his motto came out a long time before it was used in a movie, a long time ago. And his motto was, with these men was, that the needs of the many outweighed the needs of the few or the one. Do you understand that, folks? The needs of the many outweighed the needs of the few or the one. And folks, I'm here to tell you today, I believe that sports heroes and people like the Kardashians, these social media people, they're not heroes. They're people who have just been put on a plateau by us. The real heroes, in my opinion, are the only people who are willing to lay down their life for you, for me, for our children, our families, and those for us, and those to become behind us. Those are the only real heroes. I knew a man who I was proud to call my dad, Oscar Summers, who bravely fought in World War II, and on his deathbed, if he was called back to service, would have gladly, if he was able to, he would have gotten up and defended his country, and he would have never kneeled to the flag. He would have stood up and saluted it. And folks, that's a real hero. That's a true hero. That is somebody who I love and will hope that I can emulate to be half the man he was. Thank God for our veterans. Mr. President, I yield the will.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 56th for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I wasn't going to come up today, but first, I want to thank all the veterans, and I want to have to correct my friend from the 36th who spoke in error a little while ago. Yes, yesterday, I absolutely talked about the ongoing concerns with Atlanta not turning their jail over. And then after I spoke, there was a press conference yesterday, thankfully, where they're going to do a little something and a good step going to do a little something and a good step forward. A transition center, that's positive. But the rest of the jail is still empty. And in the next few days, somebody's gonna get hurt and somebody might lose their life because we're gonna let convicted violent felons out of the Fulton County Jail, because it's overcrowded. Empty jail, politics. I, for one, am much more concerned with the victims of crimes than the criminals of crimes. And I hope everyone would join me. And if anybody thinks that Atlanta and Fulton County right now has it all figured out, you'd be the only one in Atlanta, Fulton County, in the state of Georgia. There's a lot of work to be done, let's stop playing politics, let's do what needs to get done to keep our city, our county, and our state safe. And you can do that by supporting the men and women of law enforcement. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield the will.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 32nd for a point of personal privilege.
I know everybody's ready to go home, but I just need to clear something up. I feel like I owe y'all an explanation because our fearless leader included me in the list of people in our chamber who've served. The reason he added me to that list is that I've recently joined the Georgia State Defense Force, which works with National Guard on disaster response, and I'll be in the medical unit when I finish my training. My whole family are veterans, and I always regretted that I didn't take the military route through medical school, and so this is gonna be a new adventure in a way that I can serve. Some of you may think I'm too old to join the military at this point, but I've come to the conclusion that it's never too late to serve. So wish me luck as I finish my training and get my commission to serve as a captain in the Georgia State Defense Force. I yield the will. Thank you.
You have a privileged resolution. Mr. Secretary, will you please read that resolution?
Senate Resolution 17EX by Senator Walker of the 20th and others, a resolution honoring the life and memory of Senator Thornborne Ross Tolleson Jr. and for other purposes. Whereas the state of Georgia mourns the loss of one of its most distinguished citizens with the passing of Senator Thorburn Ross Tolleson Jr. on November 5th, 2021, and whereas Senator Thorburn Ross Tolleson Jr. was born on April 26, 1956 in Perry, Georgia, a beloved son of Thorburn Ross Buck Tolleson Sr. and Mary Eloane Shannon Tolleson. And whereas he began his political career in 1978, but was not elected to the Georgia State Senate until 2002, where he represented Georgia Senate District 18 and served with honor and distinction until his retirement in November 2015. And whereas, while serving in the Georgia State Senate, Senator Tolleson Jr. was a staunch advocate for maintaining agricultural access to water, proving himself as a champion for the state's most precious natural resources, and earning the respect of his fellow members from both sides of the aisle. And whereas he is united, he was united in love and marriage to his wife Sally, and was blessed with three remarkable children, Tripp, Ansley, and Kelly. And whereas he gave inspiration to many through his high ideals, morals, and deep concern for his fellow citizens, and the devotion, patience, and understanding he demonstrated to his family and friends were admired by others. And whereas, a compassionate and generous man, Senator Tolleson Jr. will long be remembered for his love of family, friendship, and community, and will be missed by all who have had the great fortune of knowing him. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body join in honoring the life and memory of Senator Thornborne Ross Tolleson Jr. and express their deepest and most sincere regret at his passing. That completes the order.
Is there objection or adoption of the resolution? The chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? Quiet bunch today. The chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 9:00 a.m. on Friday, 12, November 2021 pursuant to H.R. 2E-X.
Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements?
The Senate Rules Committee will meet upon adjournment in Room 450 of the Capitol.
Does any Senator wish to make an announcement? The chair sees none, the Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Friday, November 12, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and Senate stands adjourned.